It's seven o'clock, sir.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can we please start with the roll call?
The council president, Corman.
Here.
Council member Prince.
Here.
Council member McGurven.
Here.
Council member Halloran.
Here.
Council member Benedetti.
Here.
Council member Ben.
Here.
And council member Perez.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Okay, thank you. We're going to start off tonight with a public hearing, community development block grant allocations. And tonight presenting, we have Amanda Askren and Diane Uday.
Thank you, ma- mayor and council. We are required to do an annual public hearing to decide how to use our CDBG funds for the next year. So this is our 2022 CDBG grant fund allocation we'll be discussing. Let me share my screen if I may. Okay, so. We are expecting approximately $729,776 in 2022 CDBG grant funds. And after contractual set asides, city planning and admin, and we will use the rest for city public facilities and improvement activities. As council member McGurven pointed out earlier this evening. Starting in 2015, we did a fund swap. The housing repair program used to be funded out of CDBG funds. And we swapped them with CED because CDBG has a lot of strings attached. And it allows CED to do a lot of things they couldn't do with general funds. So in 2015, we did a fund swap. And CED has been using the funds ever since. The funding plan, the, the top section is set asides that are contractual through our ICA. And it includes 72,978 for general admin, another like around 15,000 for capital administration. The housing stability program is 30,000 some and housing repair program 182,000 roughly. With those set asides, the rest will be and planning and admin for the city, the rest will be going to the public facilities improvement program, streetscapes, and I'll let Amanda speak to that later. The one I wanted to talk about tonight, because we haven't talked about it in a while, is how the county is using our funds. So as you can see, the housing stability program has, will be having 36,000 and change taken out next year. And has a repair of the 182,000. This is the report for the 2020 usage of the housing stability program. We cut the list of the top cities out just, just to make the rest of it more readable, but seven cities there. 12 households received assistance. You can see that all the South King County cities received 34, or 34 households received assistance. And in the joint cities category, Renton was clearly ahead of most of the other cities. With 16 households served, so we are accessing this program quite heavily and have been for several years. The King County Housing, Housing Repair Program provides deferred interest loans of up to 25,000 that don't have to be repaid until title changes hands, basically. And it allows people to fix up their houses to make them habitable. As you can see from this chart, Renton again is one of the major users. In 2020, applications were reviewed and accepted and 195,000 in funding was granted to our residents. And which was greater than everybody except unincorporated King County. And the spent column is a little difficult to tie to specific years because there's a lot of paperwork has, that has to be done, including loan documents. And the homeowner has to find the contractor and get everything started. So that's, there's kind of a lag there, but even there. We are second only behind Auburn in the amount that was actually spent. And this is just a summary of the last three years of the housing repair program. I think the reason we get so many takers in Renton is that our local housing repair program refers to the county and they work very closely together so they can help our residents get the help they needed, whether it's a new furnace, a new roof, whatever. So as you can see that the funded column in all three years is much higher than the contractual set aside. Spending, as I said, is very difficult to tie to specific years, but we do a good job of getting the money actually expended. Obviously, some people cancel their applications, but for the most part, Renton goes through with them and our homeowners get the assistance they need. Are there any questions before I turn it over to Amanda?
Okay, thank you, Diane. So CED helps run and manage the public facilities improvements plan with the CBDG funds. The purpose is to improve accessibility and safety for pedestrians. And we have been working to replace some standard streetscapes in the downtown and south Renton area. The goal is to use this as an economic development catalyst to continue our existing work that we're doing in the downtown area, but also encourage additional private development in the, in those areas. The 2022 project that we are advancing is to complete the engineering and create a bid package for the installation of Williams Avenue Streetscape project to meet with our civic core plan and then also to complete the, finish the installation of the wayfinding signs in the downtown area. We have finished Wells Avenue. The concrete was actually poured today, so we were in the final stages of wrapping up that project. And then half of the sign installations have also been completed. So this would just be a continuation of the work that we've already done to complete a, the Wells and Williams transition to the new street scape. Thank you. Okay. King County does require a funding contingency plan in case the HUD's allocation is greater or less and then the 2022 amounts. Any increases in the entitlements will go to the healthy housing. Any decreases will come out of the downtown streetscape. Any funds that are not contracted by December 31st will also be recaptured and reallocated to the healthy housing. And any income that the program brings in will also be, were allocated to the healthy housing program. Our recommendation is, well, we're holding a public hearing now, so got that recommendation taken care of. Hopefully, we will have some, any public comments. And then after the public hearing, the consideration of the public comments, we request that the finance committee recommend concurrence with the recommendation of the 2022 funds and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, Mandan Diane.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Pending any public comments, I move we close the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, it's been moved by council member O'Halloran and seconded by council member Corman that we closed the public hearing. And all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, public hearing is closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up is the administrative report.
Yes, all right. Good evening, everyone. Recreation Division is providing the public opportunities to learn about and view salmon in our beautiful Cedar River. Cedar River Salmon Journey. Join Seattle Aquarium naturalists at five locations along the Cedar River this October to spot spawning salmon and learn about the things we can all do to help them. Free and family friendly. Every weekend in October from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., the locations will be the Renton Library, Cedar River Park, Riverview Park, and Belmondo Reach, which is just outside the city limits. Information, please visit seattleaquarium.org/salmon-journey. Salmon Heroes Program, Environmental Science Center will be conducting field trips at Cedar River Park with the local Renton Elementary Schools throughout the next month to teach students about salmon and the environment. Starting later this month and through November, the Recreation Division and Environmental Science Center staff will offer this program for local seniors and older adults. More information at rentonlaw.gov/recreation. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonlaw.gov/trapping. All projects are weather permitting, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. That is the report.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll open the remote audience comment period. There remains the strong intent of the city to have public comment regularly included on our agendas. Each speaker, each speaker will be given five minutes to speak. It will be, it'll be called upon by a city staff member. The staff member will call the speaker's name and unmute the appropriate microphone, which will send an automatic prompt to the speaker of, you've been unmuted. This is the speaker's cue that's their turn to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your name, city of residence, and the topic you are addressing. Speaker should be able to see a timer on the screen. Please finish up your comments when you see the time is close to expiring. And we have one person signed up, I believe.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one person signed up. That is Jesse McDonald. However, I don't see Jesse in attendance tonight. And that was the only speaker that we had registered.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next, we have consent agenda. There are three items for council consideration.
I'm Mr. Mayor.
Yes, council president, Corman.
I'd like to ask if any council members would like any of the three items removed for individual deliberation discussion. Seeing none, I move approval of the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by council president Corman and seconded by council member McGurven that the council concur with the consent agenda as published. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, councilor Perez.
If may I, I just want to take a minute to congratulate Chief Schultz for his appointment for to be now the chief, the police department. He has been doing an outstanding job as acting police chief. And if we were in a normal time and a normal day, today would have been a big celebration on the dais and in, in the chambers. Well, he will receive his pin and we will have cake and we will be all over there. So we, again, the pandemic is still in this moment for him, but make sure that we will take photos and, and, and again, a, a warm congratulations to him and to the old police department that have been doing an outstanding job during the pandemic as well.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much for those kind words. You're right. Chief Schultz took over during an extremely difficult time and he has done an outstanding job. He's led the, the department through very challenging time. And he's putting together some, some very good programs. He's working with other cities to put together the mental health program navigator with the South Sound Cities. He's leading the charge on body worn cameras and I mean, in the process of putting together the chief's advisory board, all things that the the council asked to, to have done. So he's doing a great job and we're lucky to have him. So thank you very much for that. Okay, next up is unfinished business. Council president, Corman.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Council member Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Planning and Development Committee has some committee reports.
Hey Pete, Planning and Development Committee, committee report. Adoption of the 2021 school district capital facilities plans and impact fees. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt a resolution adopting capital facility plans for Renton, Kent, and Isiqua School Districts and to incorporate the requested fee amounts for each district shown below into the rent and fee schedule for Renton for 2021. Single families, $2,659. Multi-family is $4,737 for Kent. Single family is $5,818.09. Multi-family is $2,457.53. And for Isiqua, the single family is $20,291. Multi-family is $8,353. And additionally, the committee recommends that a resolution regarding this matter be presented for adoption.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, councilor Prince.
I move that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee, committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by council member Prince, seconded by councilor Perez, that the council concur with the planning and development committee report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
The next report is regarding the Rainier Grady Junction Subarea Plan. The Planning and Development, Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence with the staff recommendation to adopt the Rainier Grady Junction Subarea Plan, which will establish a vision and strategies for a neighborhood around the planned transit center that facilitates mixed-use development, maximizes multimodal transportation options, improves pedestrian connectivity, integrates with neighboring areas, and establishes a neighborhood that's distinct from the downtown, but aligned with the goals of the city center community plan. The committee further recommends that a resolution adopting the plan be presented for first reading or for adoption, essentially.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, councilor Prince.
I move that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee, committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by council member Prince, seconded by councilor Perez, that the council concur with the planning and development committee report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
And the next report is regarding a housing action plan. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt the housing action plan. Recommends that the resolution adopting the plan be prepared and presented for adoption.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, councilor Prince.
Before I move this one, I want to give a hearty job well done to Hannah Bond Miller, who's worked so hard on this and has presented to P and D more times than even I remember. And with that, I move that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee, committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by council member Prince, seconded by councilor Perez, that the council concur with the planning and development committee report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
The final, excuse me. Good. Yep. Okay, the final Planning and Development Committee report is a, is regarding hazard pay for grocery retail workers during COVID pandemic. The Planning and Development Committee has reviewed the issue of hazard pay for grocery retail workers during COVID. The committee finds that, given the fact that grocery employees are identified as essential workers, giving them immediate access to vaccines and additional protections provides adequate protections for those employees. No further action by the city is necessary at this time. The Planning and Development Committee further recommends that this referral regarding this matter be closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, councilor Prince.
I move that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee, committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by council member Prince, seconded by council member Perez, that the council concur with the planning and development committee report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay, we have one nay. Motion carries.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Council member McGurven.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Council member O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the finance committee has five reports.
Hey, Finance Committee, committee report. The first report is regarding approval of claims of payroll vouchers. Finance Committee approves the following payments. Council payable a total payment of $24,432,536.61 for a number of vouchers and payroll benefit withholding vouchers and four wire transfers. And payroll a total payment of $1,558,629.89 for payroll vouchers, including 637 direct deposits and 16 checks. This is the September 1st through 15th paper.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, council member O'Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee, committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by council member O'Halloran, seconded by councilor Prince, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Next report is regarding a fee waiver for the Environmental Science Center. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the requested waiver of $2,887.50 for the Environmental Science Center for Open Space and Field Rental at Cedar River Park.
And Mr. Mayor.
Council member O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with this Finance Committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by council member O'Halloran, seconded by councilor Prince, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
The next report is regarding a grant from King County, the Get Active Stay Active Grant. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the grant agreement for $10,000 with King County's Get Active Stay Active Grant Program, subject to approval deformed by the City Attorney Department and allocate the grant funds to the City of Renton Recreation Division.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member O'Halloran.
I move council concur with the Finance Committee, committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by council member O'Halloran, seconded by councilor Prince, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
The next report is regarding the Juneteenth holiday. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt the ordinance establishing the federal holiday of Juneteenth, June 19th, as a recognized city holiday for employees without loss of pay. The ordinance also clarifies how the city will schedule days off for holidays that fall at varying times during the week each year.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member O'Halloran.
Very pleased to work for a municipality that recognizes this incredibly important day. And I move that council concur with the Finance Committee, committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by council member O'Halloran, seconded by councilor Prince, the council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Right, the final Finance Committee report is regarding the community development block grant funds. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to accept the 2022 CDBG Community Development Block Grant Funds as proposed and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement subject to approval as to legal form.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with this Finance Committee, committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by council member O'Halloran, seconded by councilor Prince, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, councilor Benedetti.
Has no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, councilor Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Council member Perez.
No, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Next up, we have legislation. We have two resolutions for adoption and two ordinance for first reading.
Yeah, the first resolution is regarding the school district capital facility plans and impact fees. Resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, adopting by reference the current capital facility plans for Kent, Isiqua, and Renton School Districts and adopting updated school impact fees for each school district.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, councilor Prince.
Move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by councilor Prince, seconded by councilor Perez, that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
And the next resolution is adopting a housing action plan. A resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, adopting the city of Renton Housing Action Plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Prince.
I move that the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by council member Prince, seconded by councilor Perez, that the council adopt the resolution as read. Signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Yeah, the first ordinance for first reading is establishing Juneteenth as a city holiday. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending section 181 of the Renton Municipal Code, adding Juneteenth as a holiday, clarifying language as to the rotation of the existing holiday that rotates between the day before and the day after Christmas and clarifying language regarding the observance of holidays occurring on Saturdays and Sundays, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, council member O'Halloran.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by council member O'Halloran, seconded by councilor Prince, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Right, the final ordinance is for first reading is regarding an update to the urban center UC zone. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending section 4210, 4220, 4260 subsections 4280A6, 4280A85, 4280A91, 4280A92, and 42120A in section 44150 of the Renton Municipal Code, separating the urban center UC zone into two new zones. Urban Center dash one, UC one, and Urban Center dash two, UC two, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, councilor Prince.
I move this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by councilor Prince, seconded by councilor Perez, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. All right, next up is new business. Council president, Corman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two meetings to announce. The first is a, well, both of them for Monday, October 18th, 2021. The first is at 6:00 p.m. It's a committee, the whole meeting via video conference. One item on that agenda, the RFA briefing of the fire benefit charge. And then that will be followed at 7:00 p.m. by a council meeting, also via video conference. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Council member Prince.
No, no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Council member McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Transportation Committee will be meeting on Monday, October 18th at 5:15 p.m. via video conference, and there's just one item on the agenda, and it's emerging issues in transportation, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Council member O'Halloran.
I have no new business, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Council member Benedetti.
I guess, Mr. Mayor. At 3:30 p.m. on Monday, October 18th, the Utilities Committee will be meeting and by, via video conference. And we have one agenda item, which is emerging issues in utilities. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Council member Van.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any new business, but I wanted to state for the record as far as my name vote in regarding to the Planning and Development Committee recommendation to close the referral for hazard pay for grocery workers. Well, I understand that grocery workers are essential workers and noted that they have been given certain access to vaccination and other protections. However, the referral was to either have increased hazard pay for them because they're on the front line working during the pandemic, and as we are speaking, they're out there putting their lives in line. And I want to make sure that we are here advocating for our working families and the residents and in Renton. in uh, Renton that are struggling and that are putting their life in the line to put food on our table. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Perez.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one, at four fifteen, the Public Safety Committee will meet via video conference. There are three items on the agenda. Number one is domestic violence awareness presentation. Second, RFA briefing. And the third one is American issues in public safety. Thank you, Mr. Ray.
All right, what is the wish of the council?
Move we adjourn. Second.
It's been moved by councilmember Prince, seconded by councilmember Corman, that we adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, have a good night. We have a new holiday and a new chief, so um, everybody have a good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.